So I just wanted to remind everybody that all board members, applicants and agents, they're all being recorded via audio, video, and it's also being livestreamed on the website. So I just wanted everyone to be aware that, you know, all of this is being recorded and it's being livestreamed on the web. So there you go. It's all in record.
Very well. Okay, so we'll get May 12th, 2020 Planning Board meeting underway at 6:02.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to accept the agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a Chair of the Alton Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are providing access, public access, to be in the meeting by telephone. The additional public access by video or other electronic means will be available as Providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting that a member of the public wishes to speak or be recognized during the public input at the public hearing. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there's problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-507-1002. Again, that number is 603-507-1002. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. If, in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via conference call or there are the other difficulties with the town's equipment, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled for Tuesday, May 19, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call vote attendance, which each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is also required under the right to know law.
Scott Williams here. I'm joined with Josh Monaco, Jessica, Roger and Virgil, all socially distanced.
Virgil McDonald, Selectmen's rep.
Roger Sample, Chairman, tonight.
Okay, so someone else can go next.
Yeah, Russ Wilder here at my home with nobody in the room with me.
Bob Regan at my home, and I'm all by myself.
Tom Hoops and I'm all alone in my house.
And Drew Carter and I'm all alone in my house.
Welcome on.
Here will call in where they can go. All right, I'm going to read one more paragraph for you. Until further notice, all members and staff safe and to comply with RSA 91-8, the COVID-19 state of emergency and the Governor's orders on restrictions of public gatherings, the Town Hall is, Town of Alton is moving from in-person meetings to remote audio participation meetings. Remotely attend the meetings, audio only. Visit our website, wdealtalton.northampton.gov for telephone access and remote access instructions listed under news and announcements on the homepage. You can access an audio, video, livestream there as well, or telephone the Planning Departments of Office, 603-875-2162, between 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. for more information and for the dial-in code and meetings ID for each Planning Board meeting. Okay, well, we've already called the meeting to order, so that next on the agenda will be election of officers.
I'd like to make a motion.
Right ahead.
I'd like to nominate Drew Carter for Chairman.
I would like to second that motion.
All in favor of Drew?
Aye.
You should probably ask for any other further, you should ask for further nominations as well. That, you know, he's on there, so.
Yeah. Are there any further nominations?
For Chairman.
The Chairman. Hearing no further nominations, we'll go with that. Say your name and.
How you vote.
How you vote, because we can't see your.
Yeah, yeah, Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Regan, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye.
Scott Williams, aye.
Roger Sample, aye.
And Virgil doesn't vote, right?
You're a voting member.
Virgil McDonald, aye.
You can vote for yourself, Drew.
Can I? I'll say aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next would be nominations for Vice Chairperson.
Make a motion to nominate Bob Regan as Vice Chair.
Tom Hoops, second.
I'll nominate Scott Williams. Any other nominations? Okay, so let's hear votes for Bob Regan.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye.
Drew Carter, aye.
Is that all of them?
Yeah. Except the Bob.
Bob Regan, aye.
Okay.
That's four. Yep. Carries.
They already got the four, so there's no second one. What do the other, what have we got?
We have clerk.
Nomination for clerk.
I'd be happy to remain as clerk if you want.
I nominate Russ Wilder.
Drew Carter, seconds.
Anybody disagree with Russ Wilder being clerk?
He's job.
Hearing none, Russ will be clerk.
Oh, wait a minute, you've got to take us.
Roll call. All right, all in favor of Russ Wilder as clerk?
Yeah, I'll vote for myself, aye.
Bob Regan, aye.
Drew Carter, aye. Spoke over you, Tom, sorry.
That's, no, no problem.
Tom, say aye.
Tom, you have to vote.
I, oh, sorry, I did. I thought I did. Tom Hoops says aye.
Virgil McDonald, aye.
Scott Williams, aye.
Roger Sample, aye. Okay, you're the clerk.
Again.
Okay. We're going to temporarily waive other business. Number six, any other business that may come before the Board and public input on non-case specific local planning issues will be waived for this meeting.
Can I just interject for one minute? So I don't know if you, if you, and if you want to still act as Chair to go through the meeting.
Well, that's a question I had because I noticed.
Scott Williams will move to let Roger carry out this meeting since we're in position already, and so that way the next meeting we can be assigned to our basement, so wherever else we're supposed to go.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All right, well, we've approved of the agenda already. So we'll hear case P20-03, Tom Vani, Diane Louden.
Something on that item before. The temporarily waiving a couple of portions of the agenda that we usually have in extra input. So if people do have input on those two sections, they can submit it ahead of time. So it's not like we're just waiving it all together for who knows when. So we're going to waive that for now, but if they have some things, they could submit it via email or call me, and that can be addressed at a subsequent meeting. That sound fair enough?
Sure. I'm sure they must read that on websites and any other places too, it's not just here.
Yeah. Okay, so we can go forward.
All right.
Josh, you want to?
Bring us to the museum.
I'm going to mute. So Tom and Diane.
They're looking right now, just give heads up before I unmute.
Okay, Tom and Diane, we're going to unmute you so that way you can join in with the meeting. All right, you guys there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to.
Yeah, hold on a second, Diane, we don't have any, we don't have video of them?
No.
It's coming up, it looks like.
Yeah, they're going to be here.
So we can't see the applicant, and can anybody see the applicant?
We got their names up there, they just need to hit their video button on their Zoom thing.
We're going to have to, I think legally, we have to see that they are attending the meeting.
Hello.
Hello. Yeah, hi, Tom, hi, Diane. Yeah, I lost Tom now. There he is.
Hold on, everybody, we do not have video of Tom or Diane as of yet.
It's okay, we just, it just was enabled, so we just turned ours on.
There you go. We see you, if you could lower your camera a little bit, we see that Tom is 2:30.
Was that all right?
There you go. Yeah, look great, Tom.
Okay, I'm with Kate, my daughter, a technical assistant here. And Diane is in.
I don't play that, Tom.
I'm here.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, we need to make contact with Diane.
All right, okay, one person at a time, Tom. You said, "I'm here." I'm here, where?
Diane, I'm here.
Where? In that room with Tom?
No.
No.
Trying to log in.
Yeah, she just has to hit her video button. There you go, there we are. Hi there.
I don't know, he's special. He's got a good setup there. We're coming to you.
We're still not seeing her.
We haven't seen her yet.
I'm here.
Hey, we see her now.
We're all here now.
Yes, you're ready, we're going to go ahead and share screen.
So, so point of order, Mr. Chairman, Diane is, she, we know where Tom is, he's in his office with his daughter. Who, Diane, where are you and who's with you?
There is nobody with me and I'm in my office at home.
Okay.
All right, if we're all ready, I'd like to just review the planner review for, go through some of the outstanding items, and if you have any questions, maybe jot some questions down, and then we can review them afterwards. Fair enough?
Yeah. All right. Okay, well, this says indicate where the snow storage will be located, so I would assume that would have been a question from the previous visit, and that must already be on plan. I mean, why are we discussing that tonight?
Well, if you just let me read through that and I'll tell you why it's still listed on there. Okay, so some of the things that we talked about on the, when we were at the sidewalk are still outstanding that aren't on the plan. So Josh, if you can pull up document number six, it's the planner review.
If anybody can't see this, please advise us.
Okay, there we go. And you kind of scroll down a little bit to sort of the bottom of that page one. There we go. So this list over here where it says the outstanding plan items are as follows, so these are some of the things that we had discussed that are still not on the plan. So to indicate where the snow storage is located, indicate where the lighting to the pathway to and from the parking lot will be, indicate where the drop-off area is located, and I think that was where the handicapped area was, and to indicate in a note that music being played outside the barn will only be acoustic. So those are the things that are still missing off the plan. There are a couple items that should be listed on the executive summary, just to clarify the maximum capacity of guests, as you indicated on the plan, and clarify that there'll be no long-term food storage. Can you go to page two, please? At the top of page two, it indicates that there are some additional, a better input, and I don't know if you want to go through that now, or you want to go through that at the end? Anybody?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't you go through your notes and then we can just read those at the end?
Okay, all right, so I just kept the fire protection on here just because there were some important notes from the fire department that, you know, need to be, just abide by those notes. The traffic impact analysis and off-street parking, we did discuss that at the sidewalk, and it appeared that the parking looked pretty adequate. Let's see what else. And Ms. Louden noted that if she needed to, she would expand it if we had to, but I don't, I don't think anybody had a problem with what was located currently.
Right.
Right.
Can you scroll down a little bit, please? Josh? Okay, so there was a question about septic and whether or not an outhouse could be used, and I did talk to John Dever, the code official, and he said if it's just an outhouse with a hole in the ground, that you would not be able to use that for commercial use, but you could use, you know, like the renting, like porta-pies, that, that could, that could be used instead, but you wouldn't be able to use your current outhouses if they're just ones with a hole in the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, the lighting, so that was a question on whether solar lighting could be used in the parking lot, and I did, again, talk to John about that, and he said that the solar lighting could be used as long as it was bright enough and it would stay lit throughout the whole event. I mean, these are some things that you guys can talk about afterwards, but just figured I'd throw all these out here to begin with. All right, if you can go to page three, please, Josh. So this was the stormwater drainage in the parking lot, and at the sidewalk, Tom had noted that there was going to be an additional swale installs. So that's that. We talked about signs, parking lot sign, and the handicapped parking sign had been added on the revised plan. Hours of operation, they're not real, the days of operation aren't real specific, but the executive summary does indicate operation is part-time and it's not a full-time endeavor, so, I mean, that seems to be sufficient enough. I don't know if the Board wants to do anything more specific, but.
You never know when somebody's going to want to have their event, so how can you?
Right. So those are some things. So those, those were, those were the things that I had noted that were kind of still outstanding, so I will now give this over to the Board.
This note department, any concerns for the fire department, as noted above, and I don't see any notes above.
Well, there's a reference above, which also makes mention of an attachment, I believe, that's not there.
All right, so do you want to, you want to pull up the fire department comments?
Yes.
Okay, Josh, document number two, please. Yep, these are already things that were addressed at the last, so it's just.
They can, once they get a permit, so.
Now, the, the, the only thing that really occurred to me, you know, as we walked around and we saw everything, and I don't see it noted on here, was, and it's probably, I think the most important thing, was the, the pushback.
Yep.
Is that noted somewhere?
I think that's noted in the, the sidewalk minutes.
What did you say, Roger? Cut out.
The, there's a fence for the horses.
Yeah.
And it's, it's right, it's right near the road, she was going to push that back further from the road.
Yeah, it's already done.
Yeah, okay. That was just something that really occurred to me, that when you're talking safety.
Yeah, that's, we've already done that.
That stone hurt that bad?
No.
At least you pay attention.
So, Tom, where would we be on these items that she says aren't on the plan?
I can address those and go over there if you like.
Yeah.
Could I share the screen? I got my own diagram. You could take that one down, maybe I could bring mine up.
Yeah.
Somebody has to stop sharing.
Okay. Share screen.
Yeah.
No fair, you have a technical assistant.
We're going, we're going to have to reap some bounty. Whoop, there's a desktop.
Click on one of those.
Click on one of those?
Yeah. Click plan, click there, yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Can you full screen it, please?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, here's the site plan, and the snow removal would be anywhere here, and the reason I don't have it is I, I don't think of it, I don't think of where it would go, other than everywhere, so I can add circles for snow storage.
Yeah.
Not a problem. The last meeting, we kind of assembled out here in the parking lot, we took a tour down this pathway to the banquet building, and I've added that to the plan since then. And I would add some lights to this path now, so I would update the plan with these items on this planner review. But also I added lights around the parking lot, so solar lights. And the drop-off isn't shown here, but it's here where the handicap area is. This is, this is an obvious drop-off area anyway. If somebody were getting married, you would drop the ride off here and then go out this way, or something like that. Most people would gather here and then walk along the pathway to the building. So I have a handicap parking that I may have had on there anyway, but not, if I didn't, I've added it, and I have a handicap sign, the service entrance back here, I have a parking lot sign. And then I have a parking lot sign detail. I have parking lot lights, which are solar lights, and those don't have wires, they're just planted in the ground. And it has 600 lumen, and lumen means brightness, and I believe that's okay.
It's comparable for LED lights, instead of saying watts, now you say lumens.
Yeah, lumens is brightness. And these would be placed around here, and Diane or one of her assistants would plant these in the ground, and if it gets dark, they, they would light up.
Yeah.
And that way she can mow this area here without getting tangled up with wires if she had other kind of lighting and so forth. And I know, the executive summary that I've written out, I could correct that to 100 people maximum and no food storage on the property and so forth. And then I could put on conditions of approval on the plan like you normally do.
Don't forget the acoustic.
And a note about acoustic, which, I mean, it's just, that's just playing music playing, right?
It's not amplified.
Not amplified, yeah. And that, that was to, yeah, some of the neighbors.
I have a.
And should that, the comment about the acoustic music be included in the executive summary as well?
Yeah, I could do that. Here's the septic design. After the last meeting, we went and designed the septic system. We got approval in February and for the function room here at 1,200 gallons per day, so that's been updated.
So where is that going to be, Tom? That's going to be out where that current one is?
Yeah, it's going to be beside it on this side of it here. Yeah, so here's the septic plan and.
Okay.
Existing, and the, the barn is over here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So I'm over to this side and it's bigger.
So does it, does it replace it, or is it in addition to?
No, it replaces it if the other one fails.
If the other fails, okay.
And I might have another picture here. It's, I like looking at these pictures, so here's the barn, here's the house, and David's road is out this way.
Right.
Then the septic is in, right in, right in here, so. Right in there. So Diane can answer any questions that I haven't talked about or anything.
You're spot on, Tom.
Well, thank you.
So as a clarification, the lighting that we're talking about, they, they all seem to be ground-planted solar fixtures, so is this something that would be put out prior to each event? So when we have snow, it wouldn't be buried in a snowbank because you'd be collecting them before the snowstorm and?
Yeah, I, I would imagine she'd have a bundle of those in the barn and then take them out and plant them along the parking lot and along the pathway.
I, I have them already, and I generally would leave them out for the summer, I collect them in the fall, and would put them out in the snow, but they need to be, if, if there's anything happening in the winter, there never has been, so that's what I would do. But I have about 40 of them already, which is more than enough to get around that parking area, and I'll get separate ones for the, for the walk.
How did you come up with the conclusion that the lighting that you're proposing is sufficient? I don't see any engineered lighting plan, which most commercial.
I don't see any engineered lighting plan, which most commercial things do. And, and are these lights dark sky compliant?
Well, they, they point, they have shields to point downward.
There's a picture.
I have a picture right here.
Okay, you got that picture here?
Yeah, and they're adjustable. They could be up and, you know, I mean, where it's so rural up there, if they put lights and someone's looking, they'll probably be a little upset.
Yes, and, and, but on the, on the opposite side of that argument is there are code requirements for amounts of foot candles in parking areas and public pathways.
Yes, I agree.
So there, there really should be a lumen study, technically should be a lumen study done.
Usually where you purchase the lights from, they have a lighting engineer and they usually, in my instances, they provide it for you free of charge to sell you their product.
Did you want to add that as a conditions precedent?
Well, I, I think, I think we need to know if the lighting is satisfactory, so, yeah.
I agree.
All right.
Moving on to the fire department, on their list of requirements, have all of those items been taken care of and checked off by the fire department yet, or is that still pending?
Diane can answer that, I believe.
I think we saw them all done when we were there. We saw the egress signs, the smoke alarms. I think we pretty much saw that their items were taken care of.
Okay, so we still would need a sign off from the fire department?
Well, once they get a permit, then the fire department has to go up and inspect.
Yeah.
Totally. The, yes or no. They're not done, they, they won't be able to.
There's a note at the bottom of the fire department memo that states that there will be an annual inspection prior to getting an assembly permit.
Fire Department does that regularly.
Right.
If I could just pop back to the lighting for a second. 3,000 K is preferred color of lighting, which that means it's a warm white. It's not a harsh, harsh, bright white colored light. And we've been trying to have everybody in town do the warmer white because it's much more pleasing to everybody to look at. So 3,000 K, that stands for Calvin.
I don't think these solar lights are bright.
No, they have some that are bitter, but that's why we're asking for a lighting study.
Yeah, 600 lumen is pretty good. I have a bunch of them myself. And they, they work like many, these ones work like many spotlights, so they, they give good lighting.
We just need to know if it's accurate, Tom.
Yep, I agree.
I'm going to stop sharing.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Well, let's, let's, it was just kind of breezing, breezing through these letters.
Okay.
We could start with Marlene's. I mean, she just wants to know why we can't have the sidewalk on the weekend.
Right, which is pretty tough.
Sent to her letter and.
Pretty much.
Well, that's pretty tough to do because now you're bringing your department heads in on overtime, which is taxpayers' money. And we're all, I mean, we usually go sidewalks, but usually after our workday, you go take a walk.
If it's, if it's that important, then you have to make time.
This particular one we did during the day because it was winter and it's dark at night, so we couldn't do it at night. So there's, there's things that, you know, you have to take into consideration.
She did send a representative.
Yeah, she did. That was the forester, right?
Yes.
Charlie Marino, was it? Yes.
I, I breezed through Mr. Ferrucio's letter as well, and, and a lot of his stuff is a rehash of the comments that we had that day, you know, speeding, litter.
Which we'll have to have Kenny put, put signs in. He says we get a letter from, is it Lane? Diane, we get a letter and I'll, so we can put it on the agenda for.
He mentioned something about paving. That, that wasn't the town road. That was just her road. I, I don't know.
I don't know if we'd pave in Davis Road. It ain't on our list.
Can I ask a dumb question? I, I'm curious about the condition of Davis Road. I was, I haven't been there for 35 years. And 35 years ago, it required a four-wheel drive to even get partway through.
It's like a freeway now, Tom.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful road.
Okay. I.
The town takes care of it, and then at the end of it, we just gave the guy permission to fix it up himself where the town stops. He's got Diane.
That was my husband. I, I've redone the road.
Well, above you, the guy, you got a house above you?
Doug Dorr, he has a hunting cabin on the snowmobile trail, but nobody else is.
Yeah, and Dougie's not going to build a road to his hunting cabin.
No.
Andrew has a piece up there.
I, I think you weren't listening to it. You gave permission to her husband.
No, last night at the meeting, at the selectmen's meeting, the guy come in that's at the end of Davis Road. Not Dougie Dorr, there's one more lot in there somewhere, and he's going to fix the road. We gave him the permission to fix the road, Davis Road. Diane, do you have any idea who might be out there?
No idea.
There's nobody above her.
There's nobody above me.
There's a lot there somewhere.
I'll be surprised.
Now, now there's a logging operation that goes on up there, is there not?
That's at, at Marlene Minehouse. She has it logged every 10 years or so. That was part of the discussion because those trucks were very damaging to the road last time.
Correct.
That was a lot of the, what I had to repair. I, I don't know who that is.
I thought they were required to put a bond on.
A logging road, so.
They do. But it was, I think it was lot 132 or something up there off Davis Road.
I don't know.
And he's going to fix class six road so he can get to the back of his lot.
Well, perhaps there's somebody between Dougie and her.
Andrew Ross has a piece up there.
He goes the other way. He goes down the hill.
Right, he goes down the hill. These blueberries are up in there.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't think it's a matter for us anyway who this, who this other guy is.
It would be, actually, it would be nice to have somebody participate in keeping that road fixed.
Now, doesn't your road begin right after Ferrucio?
Yes.
Or is it up at the, at the crossing?
No, it's right at Ferrucio, then I've got to take it up the hill and down into my property. So I take care of it as it goes up from Ferrucio and down into my property.
Has everybody read the comment? Yes, he's got, pick this, pick that, anything, you know.
The second president on the put it on the print. Or you could ask the public.
Yeah, well, put, put one on the print.
Any other items you want?
Any of the items he wants?
No.
He wants no lights, no cars, no noise, no. Oh, yeah, condition, a condition. No, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think we're ready for that.
Yeah.
But we got to do the, the, about that we didn't get correspondence for.
Right.
Right.
Josh, is there anyone that sprayed their hands?
We have any, Roger, should say, ready the speakers so if they're listening.
Is there any, any public input?
Wish, raise your hand.
Wish, raise your hand if you'd like to add input on this.
Star nine by telephone.
Star nine by telephone. Yeah.
There's a whole way in.
So, so, so basically we could, I mean, whether the, the outstanding is just the, just the lighting here that.
Yeah.
Yeah, approve this with.
Without a condition.
Press it.
Can I add it on the lighting study?
Okay, well, if you're going to do a lighting study, somebody has to look at it. So what, 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 doing a study? Well, what, what the study does is it will give you a plan of the site, and it will give the lighting and how many lumens are in each area, and shows how it drops off as it goes out. The type of light fixture will be specified by that. And it's usually then they sell it to you and that.
But I, I understand that, but I understand Roger, too, is.
She's got a, she's got a pathway going through the woods. She just has some little solar lights, so you can see where you're walking. You go to an electric company and they're going to sell you. How do you know it's adequate? How do you know it's adequate? I've seen, everybody has them. And I can understand by a building, if you want to make sure there's, you know, you know, lighting by, adequate lighting by a building.
Well, I understand, too, is it, they send it in to go at this engineered, and we put it as a condition on the print. We, we won't be looking at it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, what, what's, what's the sending it out for? It's the lighting engineer. If you want to have an engineer check it, but I, I think if we have an engineer drawing by someone, it's probably good enough, you know?
I feel what he's saying.
I can provide that. Yeah, Tom, Vanny, I can provide that. I know a manager of the store in Wolfboro. He's done that for me before.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
He's an expert in the, he'll give me the diagram and what, what we need for lighting. With the lumen circles all over and all that. I can do that.
Remember that 3,000 K, Tom, too.
Thank you.
3,000 K.
Yeah, that's a warm, warm light.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. All right, seeing no public input, we'll, we'll, we'll move on here and we'll, we'll look for motion, I guess, at this point. Rest of the board, your, your wishes?
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, on case P 20 dash 03, I move to accept the plan as adjusted by the topics we've talked about this evening. The lighting is a major concern in Portville Johns versus an outhouse. Outhouses are not acceptable. And the rest of the stuff on the conditions precedent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We should ask her discussion. Any further discussion? Then we'll do a roll call vote.
Yeah, Russ Wilder, aye. Bob Regan, aye. Tom Hoops, aye.
Drew Carter, aye.
Roger McDonald, aye.
Scott Williams, aye. Roger Sample, aye. Motion carries. You're all set, Diane.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And assistant. That will move us on to case P 19 dash 23.
All right, so Ally Brown, you know, Ally and Jim Brown got in touch with me, and they are going to withdraw from this conceptual consultation because they will be submitting a minor subdivision application with a waiver to a major subdivision application.
Major subdivision. Not me, not mine, major.
Right, submitting a minor application. Yes.
Exactly what she said. Almost. All right, so then we'll move on to discussions. Regarding the Town Engineers Contract, North Point Engineering LLC and KB Partners LLC.
Yeah, so Mike McNally is not increasing his rates for the year, so they're the same as last year. And Kevin Leonard went up a dollar on all of his items, so that, that pretty much, so this is the follow-ups from January that you guys wanted me to contact them, get their rates for the year, and then you would decide from there.
I, I think we ought to keep them.
He's right down there.
So is that a motion?
I make, I make a motion that we accept North Point Engineering and KB Partners with their revised, with their stated rates for this year that there was sent to Jessica.
I think it's a, a recommendation. So you're recommending to keep them, and then it gets presented to the board of selectmen.
I'll second his motion. Scott Williams seconds the motion.
Yeah, yeah, it's a year, right, Jessica?
It's currently, yes, it's a year.
It's a year. For, so for the, for the rest of 2020.
Yep.
Okay, Scott, Russ seconded it. Roll call.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Regan, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye.
Drew Carter, aye.
Roger McDonald, aye.
Scott Williams, aye. Roger Sample, aye. Motion carries, and so do the engineers. We received an estimate for road maintenance and surety dated January 31st.
Yes. Yeah, so this is just a follow-up, again, from January's meeting when Brad was before the board. You guys had approved his, his road for, for final approval. And Mike McNally had decided that, yes, he should put a bond on the road. It's part of the regulations. It should be, it should be in place on the, on every road that, that goes through. And this is the estimate that he came up with. So tonight, what you guys were supposed to do is this bond is good for 18 months, so you need to come up with a date 18 months out as to when it expires.
Why wouldn't, why, why are we getting a?
Why wasn't the security on that road already?
It had been released.
There is, so there's, there's some cash security.
So, so, Tom, why'd you have to bond it now? Yeah, that's, this makes no sense.
It's out of the regulations.
The, the, the wear course isn't on it yet. Last I knew, the wear course isn't on it yet.
No, it's not finished. I was.
And finish paving everything.
Right, it's done. He's already had approval.
Okay, I, I was just up in there recently, and I don't, I'm not going to argue that because I don't know for sure, but I don't think it's, the wear course has been paved.
This is High Point, not Sedlary, right?
Right, this High Point on the left, right, we'll just have to get by the lookout over the lake.
Right, okay, yeah.
Well, what was the inspection, what was all that inspection that was done? And, and the winter came and then he, and.
Well, they couldn't do it. Well, that's why I'm saying that maybe we need, because Kenny went and inspected it, didn't he?
Right, this board has returned money on that job, so I don't see why we're asking now for another 43,000 bucks.
He still has like $18,000 in an escrow account.
He has 18,000. We request part of 3,000.
But 18,000 is not enough.
To do what?
Why wasn't this done? Well, he brought the. Why wasn't this done? Well, he brought the print in front of us to, to ask us to release money and say the road was accepted and paved. We should have had a bond on there before we did anything. The bond should have been on there first.
There is build or bond. You don't have to bond all the time. Do not have to bond by state RSA. It's build or bond. This road is built.
Well, the bond is in case the road falls apart if the town accepts it and falls apart.
Right, but this road has been built for five, six, seven years. There's like a dozen houses up in there now. I, I, this makes no sense to me whatsoever.
It's, it's in your regulations. I'm just going by what the regulations say.
Well, uh, we need to look into this.
So don't we hold the bond until the road is accepted?
No, no, eighteen months after you're done with the road construction.
Well, you have to check the road, the town.
Yeah, yeah.
If not, it's called a private road and you're allowing permits to go onto a private road. And here we go again.
I know they're gonna, the thing about it is, is what I've done in other communities is if it hasn't, the, the wear course hasn't been on, Kenny and he can come up with a number that it's gonna take to put that wear course down. A lot of towns like to let it go longer than that and then they have that money in their own pocket at that point in time to put the wear course on.
Well, that's why I thought when he came in front of us, he said the finish course was on and done.
I, I'll go a little tomorrow, but I don't think so.
Okay, going on, we, we did a sidewalk between Mike and Brad. I mean, it says it right here. As required in the subdivision regulations, a warranty security is required in an amount equal to ten percent of the total construction cost and must be held for a period of eighteen months.
From where?
And we've sent somebody out there, Kenny or, or the engineer or something to say, okay?
Yep.
Probably shouldn't be holding any of this money.
I don't think so. I, I, I don't know, I don't know where course. If the wear course isn't there, yes, but if it's there.
Can we just send Kenny a text, ask him if the wear, if there's a wear course there?
He may not know. I'll move to table this until we straighten it out.
I'll second that.
We have Jess call Kenny and ask him to go take a look, make sure what's going on with it. That way we know.
We, we have a motion to table it until we figure it out. In a second, we should go.
Until we figure it out, what are we gonna all go up there and look? We should send somebody?
No, Kenny can send staff to go see it, yes, um, but.
All right, motion on the table to table.
So, so we have a motion in a second and I think this is the part where we have discussion.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that, that, the, the person that we need to be talking to is the engineer, Michael McNally, as to when he made his final inspection, which must have been sometime around January thirty-one. Jess, am I close?
Uh, yeah, I'm just, um, I have to date this memorandum. Yeah.
And we, we can't look at the regulations as they're printed today. We have to look at the regulations when they were, this subdivision was approved. That's the regulations that are in force.
And, and this isn't an inspection report, this is just a, uh, a bonding report.
We did the sidewalk on December twenty-third of two thousand nineteen.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm not sure that, that the regulations that, I mean, this was set up twelve years ago. It took them twelve years to get this road done. I'm not sure that we could go back to the regulations of twelve years ago so much as when he finished the road.
This, Drew, this road has been done for seven, eight years, nine years, maybe longer. This road has been in place a long time. I'm really surprised at why we're, why this is even in front of us. And, and Drew, I, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I think you'll prove that those rules are, in fact, the road standard, everything about that is under the codes then. If you increase the road width in later times, that doesn't make any difference. It's what was approved at the time and those were the, the, the policies in order.
That's pretty well.
Almost built out.
Right. So I guess we gotta figure out when this road was done and maybe find out why it took us five or seven years to get around to looking at it.
I agree. That's why I made the motion to, to table it until we figure it out.
Right. Okay, I'm with you.
Move to the question, please.
Well, we, we had the motion in a second and now we need, we need a vote.
Yep.
Yeah, Russ Wilder, Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Regan, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye.
Drew Carter, aye.
Roger McDonald, aye.
Scott Williams, aye.
Roger Sample, aye. And that vote was for ta, tabling this until we have further information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
New business. Find your department's new Facebook page.
Great.
So.
What's this book?
I love it, Tom.
I didn't.
That's Insta, Instagram.
So I, I created a, a Facebook page for the planning department. Um, it's, it's a venue to where people can, um, get more information than just off of the website. Times are changing. Lots of people are on social media and especially right now. Um, you know, everybody is doing something electronic, um, you know? So it's, it's not set up as a venue to have a lot of discussions back and forth with people. Things that I've posted, a, a lot of things lately are just sort of some notices, notices of cancellation of meetings, some agendas, things like that. I, I do note that if anybody has any questions, please contact the office via email or by, you know, via telephone. Um, I don't want it to be a place to where, you know, people start arguing with each other. This is not, I wanted it to, I wanted it to be positive.
Well, to the moderator, you take that stuff down immediately.
I wanted it to be a place where, um, you know, people could get additional information, you know, lots of people are already, like I said, sitting on Facebook, sitting on their phones. Um, they could just click on the page, you know, look and see what's up, um, you know, recent information, things like that. Um, I'd also like it to be a place to where I could share information, kind of like a tip of the week or like a tip of the month. Um, be able to explain maybe like an application process a little more, um, just kind of like, you know, things, things of, of what the department's doing, um.
Make it a positive.
Yeah, um, definitely, um, using that.
Meeting stuff there.
Yeah, meeting stuff and, and, and I think will really come in handy um, when we start working on the master plan stuff. I think it'll be a good place to, um, try to get.
As well as that.
Yep, to try to get, um, you know, a, a broader, uh, input from the town. I think that might be, might be something good.
Well.
This was approved.
Input, I don't, I don't, I, I don't, I, I don't agree. I don't think it's, I don't think it's good for input. I think it's good for information.
Right, that's what.
No input.
Right, well, the in, the input comes from.
We're talking Facebook here and Facebook input is trash.
And that's what I just said. So people don't comment on the Facebook posts. They call or they email.
Well, that's not what, that's not what you said, though. You said, "A little bit." And, and Scott said, "You're, well, you're the master and you can edit it." Well, now, now you're censoring it. I, I think it should be posting, you put the information for the people. Here's the information of the planning board. Skip the, the back and forth.
There is, there is no back and forth.
Yeah, no, 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 uh, the way she's got it set up, it's, uh, it's informational. And, uh, I think, I think, I, I think it's good. I'm looking at it right now. I think it's good. It's a good way to, uh. Yeah, I, I like it. Yeah, I, no, I like it. I think she's right, uh, you know, a, a lot of people, this is how they get the information and she's not, uh, putting it up for, uh, turning it into, uh, you know, a comment gallery, so.
Right, I don't have time for that.
Yeah, I think it's good.
And that's my point and I don't think it should morph into that either.
Right.
It's today, but that.
She can manage it.
I, I think, uh, relative to the master plan, one of the challenges that we're gonna have is getting a public engagement. And I think the, uh, Facebook page, uh, could help in that regard.
I think so, too.
Well, now you're, you're talking input again.
Right.
No, we're talking making, we're talking making connection with the public.
That's input.
Right, so everything I post, every post says at the bottom of the post, "For comments or for information, if you have any questions on anything, please contact planner@alton.nh.gov or contact the office via telephone at eight seven five two one six two." So I'm giving people, I'm not shutting everybody off. I'm, I'm giving them some information. If they have questions on it, they wanna comment on it, they wanna, whatever. Contact me at the office so I can talk to you personally. I would wanna talk to you, you know, I wanna hear your voice, you know, I wanna know your opinion. Instead of this argument.
That's their source of.
So that's their input coming in on something that I post.
Call me on Facebook, telephone. That was what we were nervous about, turning it into an argument channel off. Getting nasty and stuff.
Right.
She set it up the way she did so it doesn't come into that.
Right, and it's not just planning board stuff, like the, so the planning department also includes the zoning board. So, so it's a compilation of, you know, both boards. So it's just, it's bigger than just planning board.
Yeah, I think it's good information to be able to get information out to the taxpayers.
Yep.
That's good.
Don't know what it looks like yet, but.
We've gotten some good feedback so far. People look at the posts, you know, they share them.
She wanna be going that webinar.
Your wife's on it.
Yeah, well, my wife's computers are both broke. I broke them. I'm here watching. I broke both computers. I'm taking it in four minutes.
Is that similar to my dog ate the homework?
Yeah, that's just about it.
Me and electronic computers that just don't go C I to I. Let's move on to B, uh, Board to schedule additional planning board meetings. How far are we behind?
All right, so, so right now, we still have, we still have the May nineteenth regular board meeting still on the schedule. So we haven't done anything with that. So, right, so, so ideally, if I can get, we don't have a lot of applications backed up. The next one that was on the agenda that should have been heard back in February is the Rand Hill Conceptual.
Rand, Rand? Rand Hill?
What was that?
Rand Hill?
Rand Hill.
Oh, Rand Hill, okay.
Yeah, Rand Hill, right off of Route eleven. So they are, we're coming in with a conceptual consultation, but I've gotten so many questions, so many emails, all kinds of people inquiring about it because it's a huge project.
Right.
I'm thinking that that could be at a next meeting. There's, there's no butters. We don't have to notify anybody. So maybe that could go on the nineteenth.
Because it's a conceptual.
Conceptual.
Oh, okay.
So since I don't have to notice anybody ahead of time, maybe we can squeeze them in on the nineteenth and we can get them done because they've been waiting since February.
Should we put a notice in the paper about that to get the call?
On Facebook.
But, but we have to do proper noticing, so, I mean, as long as.
But it's a conceptual.
But it's conceptual.
But it'd be nice.
But there's an advertising. You have to advertise it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That doesn't have to be advertised in the newspaper.
No, but our meeting does.
But if you advertise.
That we're having a meeting, I think we have to advertise it.
Oh, yeah, definitely, because we've already been done.
So, yeah, so the nineteenth, nineteenth's not gonna work.
No, that's my point.
Why is it not, why isn't that, why isn't that meeting advertised? Because we, we scheduled it. At, at the last.
It was canceled.
When we were on the phone. When we were on the phone, we, we scheduled.
Advertise the conceptual. And we're gonna end up with a big crowd. It might make it easier to hear them out through the conceptual, let them call in and hear it all out so we know what we're heading for.
Yeah.
When you come in for the regulation.
Yeah, this is. This has been, uh, this has been talked about a lot, uh, so I, there's gonna be a lot of interest in it.
Finally, oh, yeah, and that's the thing is if, if they come in for the, the do it and you get the butters, you're liable to have everybody eleven D, down the bay. I mean, a lot of people are talking about this, so if we advertise it in the conceptual, put a phone number or whatever so they can call in to get the information to get into the meeting and have public input at the conceptual, at least they'll know what's going on and we'll know what we're heading for for the meeting. Good luck, Drew.
All right, so.
You know, by the way, Drew, you can't, you can't not attend that meeting.
All right, so we have the we have, uh, Eric Gordon's lot line adjustment. We have another lot line adjustment. McNally and Jim Brown's application that just came in today.
That's it.
And that's it. That's all we have. So we don't have a giant backlog.
That's good.
Shredder.
Okay, so we, so we can't do the nineteenth because that's.
So if we, so maybe at tonight's meeting, can we officially cancel that one so that it's?
Was it, was there ever, it was a, was it ever noticed as a meeting?
No, but it's, it's.
Then we have to cancel it.
Yeah, I don't know. Do, do we?
Yeah, we gotta, we, we have to notice it, so it has to have a meeting date that's the right notice time in it, so.
Right, exactly.
The nineteenth is gonna work, so let's do the next week or something.
So if we wanna skip the nineteenth? Do we, do we wanna go to, to either May twenty-sixth or June second? Because then the following one is the sixteenth of June.
What is the noticing requirement?
A noticing requirement is, uh, ten, ten days before the meeting and settling in the day of receiving the letter. So technically, twelve.
Well, let's call it two weeks.
Make it the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
So keep me, so we'll schedule May twenty-sixth.
Yep.
You're doing the conceptual, right?
Yep.
So you don't have to send the butters.
The butters and butters don't have any notes, no. No, but in order to get the agenda out in enough places so people are aware, there's a meeting.
The noticing is what is required.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that needs to go out. That, that needs to go out at the same time. Not planning board meetings.
You guys are special.
Yeah, so if we do May twenty-sixth and then we do the June sixteenth, that's a regular meeting.
As long as it was caught up. I think that's great, as long as it doesn't be caught up.
So let's, so do we wanna squeeze in another one before the June?
Do we need to squeeze in another?
So.
What aren't we caught up on? How long is some of these things?
The twenty-sixth would work. We'd probably catch up there.
Oh, the twenty-sixth, I, I think that Rand Hill, uh, part of the hearing is gonna probably be pretty long.
I think you're right.
So if we just do May twenty-sixth, the application that I just received today would not be heard until August eighteenth.
That's not good.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's not good.
So do we wanna cr, schedule a meeting between June sixteenth and July twenty-first?
Why don't we schedule another meeting in early May, June?
Yeah, June, well, do it in June, yeah. Yeah, we should, we can't keep people waiting, really.
We can move this along, absolutely.
We wouldn't have one June.
We'd have one June seventh, sixteenth.
Right, we have a June sixteenth meeting.
Yep, so let's fit one in between either June second or June ninth.
But then that only leaves one.
But that's okay, we can come, as long as you notice them properly, we can have them every week.
Okay, we do minutes as well.
Okay.
This is like.
Well, you'll get caught up.
I'm just saying, like, it's, so there, there will be probably, yeah.
Well, I mean, right now, we're gonna.
You just said there's not many things coming in. You, you do such a good job there.
Well, it's not like we have to approve the minutes from a prior meeting, because we're approving a bunch of minutes from.
So May twenty, so May second? Then the June sixteenth, so that's.
You guys in TV land all set with that?
Yeah, so May twenty-sixth and June sixteenth?
June two.
Yeah.
June second.
Second.
Okay.
And the sixteenth.
And the sixteenth, okay.
So there'll be three meetings.
Russ.
Yeah, got it.
So then the application I received today will be heard July twenty-first.
Why, why, why?
July twenty-first?
Why can't we get them on the sixteenth?
On the second.
So the twenty-sixth is for Rand Hill, Eric Gordon on the second. I have another lot line adjustment which would be on the, the sixteenth.
You're putting one plan per meeting.
You can do all kinds of plans. We can do both of those lot line adjustments on a Saturday night. We can do both of those lot line adjustments on a Saturday.
So the problem with, with scheduling a lot, so I'm just gonna throw this out there and you guys can disagree all you want. So the problem with scheduling multiple cases is the potential of the additional people showing up at our alternate location. We have more than nine people showing up there. We have to cancel the meeting.
I have an idea. Let's make the plans, say this will, the first one will be here, heard at 6 o'clock. The second will be heard at 7 o'clock, or 6:30, or something like that. These lot line adjustments don't take a long time to.
I don't think we can put time limits on it.
Well, here's, here's the deal.
Both lot line adjustments and Brown's in there, or.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, these people are gonna come to the museum if they want to re, if they're gonna show up, right?
Wow.
John at the museum now?
Yes.
He's been there all night.
These are all his friends.
Sorry, John. I mean, so if anybody's gonna, if anybody's gonna come, they're gonna go to the museum. So if, if we're hearing case P-19, then the people that are here for case, case P-19, come on in. Everybody else, don't come in.
You can't do that.
No, it's.
Yeah, you can't, you can't restrict, you can't restrict the public from attending.
Okay, so. So, so schedule it, have it, and cancel it. Nobody's gonna show, we do this all the time, nobody comes.
I know.
Don't stop, don't stop the world.
I have not stopped the world, I'm just thinking really.
That's why I said conceptual, is the Rand Hill project you might get. Hear a lot of talk about it.
Yes.
But other than that, I mean, the regular ones, we don't get. I mean, if we get eight people out here, we've done good night.
This is a no-brainer.
And all these people can, can come to the meeting the same way that everybody comes tonight.
Right.
They don't have to.
Exactly.
Just you that doesn't have a computer.
Yep.
You're gonna be the only one in the museum.
And on our noticing, please state the Zoom thing and we would, that is the method of preference for them to.
It does state.
That way we can.
I would line the cases up and.
Why don't we pick through the list and make our meetings now? Say this hole could have this meeting, this hole could have that meeting.
Well, I would like to have our stuff cleaned up before the July meeting. The July meeting is anything that comes in between now and then.
Okay, so I think the next meeting we should do Rand Hill, because I think that's gonna, that could potentially have a big.
Yep, yep. And that's on the 26th.
Right, so then the second is.
We could probably do the two lot line adjustments. We could probably do the two lot line adjustments right after, or right before Rand Hill. Let's do them right before Rand Hill. That way if Rand Hill goes long, we know the lot line adjustments won't go long.
Yeah, right. And, and the meeting's only gonna go to 10, so.
That's right.
Right, well, you gotta take into consideration technology as well.
Any meeting's only about 10.
Well, just buy some coffee.
That's the end of the meeting.
Let's, let's do the lot line adjustments first.
They'll be on 10.
On the 2nd?
On the, no, the 26th.
So you're gonna do three cases on the 26th?
Absolutely.
We are good. We got a new chairman.
And Rand Hill, perfect, done.
What do you think, Drew?
I disagree.
You know, Rand Hill was just a, is just a consultation.
Yeah, I disagree. I, I think we should dedicate May 26th to Rand Hill, period.
I agree.
I think that on June 2nd, we could potentially double up on the lot line adjustments.
I agree. Yep.
I think you're gonna be very disappointed on May 26th. It's not gonna be that big of a deal.
Well, you haven't heard the people I've been here from.
It's a conceptual.
There's a lot of people who are interested in this.
I have a question.
Hearing, not as much the conceptual.
Well, they.
I have a question. If, if, for a conceptual, there's no public input, is there?
Yeah, they'll just listen.
There's no plan, there's no plan to tell you what, you know, there's no, there's no engineers' plans, there's no this, there's no that. It's just, well, this is what we're thinking. And we give them some thoughts, then they go home.
Yeah, well, just, 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 I, I don't think, just because I, I think there's gonna be a lot of interest, I don't think we should appear as though we're trying to rush it, okay? And I think Drew is right, just, just stick to that, let it go. You're not, they, they can't have any input because it's a consultation, but we don't want to appear like we're rushing it.
We won't. I mean, we, they can have up to three hours. I mean, if we come here at 6, we'll be done with the two lot line adjustments, I bet you by 6:30.
Oh, yeah.
I think, you know, let's just move this along. This is just, this isn't really.
All right, I'm gonna, somebody make a motion.
I move to have the two lot line adjustments first with the public, the conceptual for Connolly after that. That's the only business of the night.
Anybody care to second that?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Drew, I'd like to ask you, you're gonna be chairman for that, what do you think?
Well, I'm gonna vote nay on this.
Well, that's what we're doing now, we're voting. So why don't we take a roll call?
Russ Wilder, nay.
Bob Rigdon, nay.
Drew Carter, nay.
Tom Hoops, nay.
Okay, so May 26th is the conceptual with Rand Hill. Okay, that's May 26th. June 2nd, we doing both lot line adjustments?
Yep.
Yes.
That's it?
Well, what else do we have on the docket?
Well, the boards are gonna be in by then, won't they? Your application is in.
It's in. They're heard on June 16th.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear what that was.
All we do on the 2nd is two lot line adjustments.
It ain't even worth coming down.
This is just ridiculous. I think our responsibility here, people, is to the people, the taxpayers, and we need to get their business done. We've, we've sat on our hands long enough.
And if we're gonna make extra meetings, I mean, well, if you're coming to a meeting and you're making an extra meeting and you're doing two lot line adjustments, it's not even worth getting dressed to come down.
I thought we could do all three things on the 2nd.
There's another thing, there's more than two lot line adjustments, right, Jessica?
So there's two lot line adjustments and then the subdivision application that I received today.
Right, so we can put that on it, too.
Agreed.
On the 2nd?
Yeah.
Yes.
Two lot line adjustments and the subdivision application.
Okay, that would be plenty for a meeting.
Plus, we'll also be hearing about High Point Road and other things, so.
Well, we can hear about that at the Rand Hill meeting, because there's gonna be plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we'll all be caught up by then.
Yeah, so we'll be caught up by, by the 2nd of June.
Yeah, yeah, the June 16th will be anything new that comes in between now and then. Am I understanding this correctly?
That's all we've got. I thought you guys should have more than that. I thought it'd be busy.
It's gonna be after all this is over, though. I've had a lot of inquiries.
Yeah, well, that's why I thought we'd still put it in and to get it on the docket.
Drew, just a question. Bob, what about the master plan stuff? Can we move any of that along, too?
Well, I was gonna ask Jessica at the appropriate time where we stand on getting any kind of a consultant.
Another few minutes, Bob, we're gonna lose your face because you're in the silhouette of the.
Yeah, maybe we can discuss, we can discuss that on the 26th, because that's not on tonight's agenda.
I got you. All right.
Drew, you're the new chair of the, you're the new chair, they have to go through you, don't they?
Who goes through me?
Here right now.
Yeah, you have to set up for the master plan and everything.
And Zach. Zach should be getting kicked off.
Absolutely, we, we have a number of items that we ticked down the road since last year, early last year. So all of those kind of have to get revived.
Yep.
I'll sign up for Zach again.
All right, so we'll discuss that at the next meeting. Master plan committee, Zach committee, CIP committee, next meeting.
On the 26th.
On the 26th. But that'll be on the.
To the 26th, because you got the.
No, 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 you can't have it both ways, Virgil, come on.
That's what he's trying to make it not both ways.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on beyond that. We're gonna move on beyond that.
All right.
Let's, let's, let's approve some minutes. Do we want to approve them lump sum or we wanna, we need to hit them one at a time?
One at a time.
All right.
I read them all and they're all good.
I'll make a motion.
Special meeting minutes of December 12th.
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept as written.
I'll second, second, Bob.
All in favor?
Second that.
Voice up. Dice roll call, please.
Bob, second.
Yeah, Bob seconded, Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Rigdon, aye. Tom Hoops, aye.
Roger McDonald, aye. Oop, was broke. Drew Carter, aye.
Scott Williams, aye.
Roger Sample, aye. We'll move on to the December 12th. No, that was a special meeting. January 7th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
I'll second that.
Identify, identify, please, on who made the votes.
I'm sorry, Drew Carter making the motion.
Russ Wilder, seconding.
Roll call, all in favor?
Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Rigdon, aye. Tom Hoops, aye, abstain. I wasn't there.
Drew, aye?
Drew went first, I think.
Oh, oh, he did?
Roger McDonald abstain because I don't have.
Scott Williams, aye.
Roger Sample, aye. All right, now, isn't the video part of the record just as well? So, I mean, you don't, you can just say aye, you don't have to say.
No, you have to, because if people are listening on the phone and stuff, you have to have a.
Oh, okay.
Be identified.
Identified as you vote.
All right, so for the December 17th, planning board minutes.
So I, I actually had a couple of questions on this one. Page, page 13. Oh, Drew Carter, sorry.
Sorry, Bob, buddy.
The, yeah, it's gonna take a little getting used to.
Yeah, I agree.
On page 13, there was a question about getting a copy of the approved meeting minutes from the planning board, where we approved to split the subdivision in half that so that there was some clarification. Did we ever find that information? This had to do with the insufficient escrow amount that we felt was left behind on the Ridge Road, Evans Road deal. Yeah, that is, that has been ground and fixed. And there's just, there's a little bit of money left over in the, call it, the escrow account. But that road's been all fixed. Okay, and then it was covered with the escrow that we had? Yes, it covered it, and I think there was six or 8,000 left over that's left in there for Bird Road. Okay. Or Evans Hill. I know it's one of them. Yeah. That's all round and done, Drew. GMI committed, did it. Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to accept, Drew Carter again, I'm making a motion to accept the meeting minutes of December 17th, 2019.
Scott Williams, second.
Roll call.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Rigdon, aye.
Drew Carter, aye. Roger McDonald abstain.
Scott Williams, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye.
There you go, Tom, we were worried about you.
I'm still here.
All right, so then we'll move on to the last and final, January 21st, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2020, as, as presented.
Okay, who are you?
Russ Wilder.
Thank you.
Roger Sample seconds the motion. Roll call.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Rigdon, aye.
Drew Carter, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye. Oh, I have to abstain, I wasn't there.
Roger McDonald abstain.
Scott Williams abstain as I was absent.
Aye.
How many ayes did you have?
Four.
Four.
Nice.
All right. Correspondent for the board's review. Hampshire DOT policy regarding UAS drones used on state highways.
Yep, so I emailed that to you guys. This is just basically, just let me know. You'll read it at your leisure.